Awesome. Thanks Rick, appreciate it. Thank you Rick, thank you everybody for joining us. Appreciate you being with us for this Township Council Conference Meeting for March 1st, 2022. This is a conference meeting of the Council of the Township of Montclair and is being broadcast live on Channel 34 and is streaming live on the Montclair TV 34 YouTube channel. It is available on demand and can will be rebroadcast. This meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting was included in the annual notice of the meeting schedule as set forth in Resolution R 21210, adopted by the Council at its conference meeting of November 15th, 2021, advertised in the official newspaper on December 30th, 2021, and January 6th, 2022, posted on the bulletin boards outside the municipal building and has remained continuously posted there. In addition, a copy of the annual notice is and has been made available to the public and is on file in the office of the Township Clerk. Let's do Fledge of Allegiance, please.
To the flag, United States of America.
One nation, under God, liberty and justice.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Cummings.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Herlock.
Present.
Counselor Price Abrams.
Present.
Counselor Russo.
Present.
Counselor Schlegler.
Here.
Counselor Yakovales. Counselor Yakovales. Mayor Spiller.
Present, thank you. Next we'll do approval of minutes. There have been presented to us the minutes of August 10th, 2021, and August 24th, 2021. Are there any corrections or additions? Seeing none, I so move.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Alright, thank you very much, adopted those. Next, we're going to move into public comment. But certainly I want to note before we even start the meeting and certainly mindful of the time with the President's State of the Union tonight. Well, we obviously have a review agenda and a couple items of action. So not too much there, we'll see. There have been crazier words spoken on long, long meetings, so we'll see where that goes. But I do, you know, want to start this certainly in this difficult time on behalf of everyone on the council and certainly all of the Township of Montclair. Just noting, you know, the bravery that we've seen of the Ukrainian people. What an inspiration that has been certainly over the last number of days, but even beyond. I think we'd all agree and say that just wars of aggression have no place in the 21st century. We are a community that supports and stands with those who are freedom-loving, who love diversity, who are welcoming. And it's important, I think, for democracies all around the world to come together. Certainly to hold Vladimir Putin accountable, certainly hold the actions accountable that we see here. It is certainly, you know, not what we stand for as a community and certainly as a nation. And we'll do all we can to support the Ukrainian people, to know that, you know, we stand with them, to offer support and to say to the broader, the broader state, the world, that, you know, this, this type of aggression, it just cannot be tolerated and left unchecked. So just want to note that as we start, certainly we, we are all seeing the images and tragic. And, you know, watching earlier, I just saw, you know, Children's Hospital and the images there, it's tough, it's tough. We know that's what war certainly can be about, but wars that absolutely had no reason at all. It's just so frustrating and certainly so sad to see, certainly for the Ukrainian people and for everyone. So with that, just wanted to start certainly by acknowledging that, acknowledging that bravery and know that we stand as a community with the Ukrainian people. So with that.
Please, please. I just want to thank you for saying that. My wife Christine is with me here and she's got relatives in Poland and her father was Polish, Anthony Sikora, S I K O R A. I was a Pearl Harbor survivor. We honored him in Montclair years ago when I was mayor. But he, his family from Poland, they're struggling with the half million refugees already into Poland. Poland's a country really in need of help now to help embrace these refugees and help the people fleeing Ukraine. So I just want to thank you for saying that. I want to just ask everyone to try to help. I know we need to help Ukraine, but the people leaving Ukraine into Poland need help. And Poland's our ally in NATO. And I think if we could get some help to Poland, it would be very nice to help the Polish people absorb refugees from the Ukraine. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next, in an effort to minimize exposure to COVID-19 and to maintain social distancing practices, this March 1st, 2022 council meeting and further meetings until the pandemic is over will only be available to the public remotely. Those who wish to participate now during public comment should dial into 408-418-9388. When asked to enter an access code, please enter 2330-8619187, then press pound. When asked to enter an attendee number, please press pound. When asked, please state your name and then press pound. The administrator will say once the caller's turn to speak and the caller will then hear two beeps. At that time, the caller will have an opportunity to make his or her comments. Mr. Stafford, Mr. Fannett, turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. First up would be caller with the number starting 973-220. It is your turn to comment, 973-220, please. For the record, state your name, keep your comments to three minutes and mute your listening device.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for this opportunity to address the council. My name is Peter Braley, a resident of Montclair and a member of the Environmental Issues Committee of the League of Women Voters for the Montclair area. The League represents and serves some 20-plus communities in Essex County and surrounding areas, but in many ways keys in on Montclair. In the coming weeks, we plan to inform you of an array of initiatives and activities that we will undertake in 2022. Tonight, I would like to mention the Eagle Rock Reservation. The reservation is partly in Montclair and is a local gem that attracts families and individuals from all over for its panoramic views, hiking trails, and other assets. In early spring, the Environmental Issues Committee of the League of Women Voters will partner with the counties and the reservation's ongoing forest regeneration project to host a series of family-oriented events to improve the health of the forest. We'll remove invasive non-indigenous plant species which choke out indigenous varieties. We'll plant trees, reroute water, and improve the trails. Later this spring, we will focus on family-friendly and educational activities, leading hikes in the reservation for people of all ages and abilities from greater Essex County and the surrounding communities. We'll advise the council when days and times are scheduled for these Eagle Rock events. Appreciation of and care for the environment starts at home and we will act to lead that effort here in hours. Thank you.
Next up would be caller with the number starting 646-701. It is your turn to comment, 646-701, please for the record, state your name. Keep your comments to three minutes and mute your listening device.
Good evening, my name is Mary Packer and I am the Executive Director of the Montclair Public Library Foundation. The Board of the Foundation, 17 longstanding residents of Montclair from every ward and reflecting diverse and committed members of the broad Montclair community have asked me to speak to you on their behalf about the library and its funding requirements. It is critical that the library receives sufficient funds from the council to provide the operating hours, staffing, and services that the Montclair community needs. Throughout the pandemic, the library has been listening and responding to the needs of patrons who could not enter the building, including expanding digital services and home delivery. Now that more patrons are able to return in person, restoring the hours of both branches is the top priority. The Montclair Public Library Foundation remains committed to lending its support to library programs and services as it has in the past. But please remember, the role of the foundation is to enhance services, not to cover basic operating costs. That is the role of the municipality. The library recognizes that the township is still struggling financially and their request represents continued belt tightening on the part of the library. The current request for supplemental funding is only about 60% of what was approved by the council before the pandemic. Funds for purchasing new materials continue to be well below pre-pandemic levels and ALA recommendations. Library staffing levels are less than half of what they were 20 years ago. In short, this modest increase over last year addresses only the most urgent needs of Montclair citizens and should be an easy yes from the council. The foundation is grateful for a community that supports and embraces the library and in turn hopes that the council will recognize that the library is acting in good faith to meet the moment in both their funding request and their desire to serve the community to the greatest possible extent. We hope the council will demonstrate its commitment to the library with action in addition to words and that that commitment is reflected in the 2022 municipal budget. Thank you.
Next would be caller with the number starting 201575, 201575. Please, for the record, state your name, mute your listening device and keep your comments to three minutes.
Yes, my name is Mitchell Kahn. I am Vice President of the New Jersey Tenants Organization and I'm the advisor to the Tenants Organization of Montclair. I know you, I say on your agenda, you will be talking about the extension of the freeze. I do want to just again remind the council that there is an affordable housing crisis in Montclair that with, in the absence of rent control, tenants are not going to be protected from unconscionable rent increases once this freeze expires at the end of the month. So something that must be done to protect them. As you know, from last council meeting, I saw there was one tenant that called that noted that she got a, she signed the lease with a 15% rent increase effective April 1st. Even though the freeze was in effect, she paid the 15% rent increase and she, and she signed the lease. But she's really going to be typical of hundreds of tenants in that situation. So I know that this is an issue you're going to have to grapple with and I'm going to urge you to extend the freeze in whatever way you possibly can. I also want to let you know that the advocates, the housing and tenant advocates are prepared to continue to negotiate a settlement with the landlords on the rent control issue. And so I just want to, you know, affirm our willingness to cooperate, cooperate and solve this particular issue. Thank you.
Next would be caller with the number starting 973-932. It is your turn to comment, 973-932. Please, for the record, state your name, keep your comments to three minutes and mute your listening device. 973.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Oh, excellent. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Township of Montclair, everyone listening in the public. This is Ahava, President of the Tenants Organization of Montclair. First, I'd like to say our hearts go out to the people of the Ukraine. You know, many, many of our residents have family there. So we did want to acknowledge and thank the Mayor and Council for that acknowledgement at the beginning of the call. Now, looking forward, we would like to see the rent freeze ordinance extended while there's no rent control in Montclair. For those just tuning in, those for the first time in the public, please note that there is still no implemented rent control ordinance due to the litigation with the MPOA. As reminded by Rachel Rosenberg in a recent Montclair local letter to the editor, there are many people in Montclair who are ready for the polls simply because they were miscommunicating text and emails. Many of them may not have said anything before that, so in that way we were helped because many felt this was a violation of their privacy. I'd like to go on to a letter from Keith Heffner, who is a member of our property, excuse me, of our homeowners, of our homeowners committee for the Tenants Organization of Montclair. And this letter to the editor was actually sent in last year. We've had many residents, citizens here in Montclair who are not only renters, but also homeowners, property owners, and landlords who are supporting the movement and also have written in to not only one paper, but several and also communicate with their neighbors about the rent control movement. The Montclair Property Owners Association is giving landlords parentheses like me a bad name. First, they are hiding behind the property owner's name when they represent landlords. Second, they ran a deceptive campaign to gather signatures. Then they managed the campaign so poorly that they failed to anticipate what every petition campaign organizer knows. Lots of signatures will be invalid. Finally, instead of accepting responsibility, they tried to shift the blame from themselves onto the township clerk for following the law parentheses while also making demands that would essentially gut the ordinance and calling it a negotiation, quote unquote. I, as the landlord of rent-controlled apartment in Brooklyn for more than 20 years, based on my experience, support rent control. With its steady but modest increase, increases, rent control allowed me to maintain my building and make a reasonable profit while also allowing my tenants the security and peace of mind that they would not suddenly be subject to unconscionable and unaffordable rent increases. This predictability also meant that tenants often stayed for long periods, sometimes 10 or more years. As a result, I seldom had to recruit new tenants and rarely had vacant apartments. Rent control had financial benefits for both me and my tenants.
And that noise was your time to ending, so please conclude your comments now.
Excellent. I will end that with, my only concern with Montclair's rent control ordinance is that the allowable increases are too high and are likely to be more than landlords need to meet their costs. Now you can read Keith Heffner's letter to the editor. Again, that was actually posted on January 9th of 2021. So we've had these letters coming in for quite some time. I'd like to thank you all for listening, the time to speak here and continue to represent the tenants of Montclair and also all of our homeowner, property owner, and landlord supporters. Have a good night.
Next would be caller with the number starting 917-825, 917-825. It is your turn to comment. Please, for the record, state your name, mute your listening device, and keep your comments to three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, this is Suzanne Atman, Co-Chair of the Montclair Environmental Commission. I want to thank you for posting the ordinance to reauthorize the renewable energy aggregation program so expeditiously. The towns who are part of this program, Maplewood, Verona, Glen Ridge, South Orange, Glen Rock, and Livingston, were all recently asked to take this action as we need this reauthorization of the program to occur by April 1st procedurally. And as you know, Montclair has been part of this program since 2018. We joined it because it provides twice the renewable energy content compared to the PSC and G standard rate as well as savings to customers. In fact, in 2021, Montclair residents saved $4 on average per resident compared to the standard PSC and G program and avoided approximately 8,000 tons of carbon dioxide, which is the equivalent of taking 1,800 passenger cars off the road. This kind of outcome is increasingly important as the climate crisis looms and electricity generation is the single largest source of climate-changing carbon emission into our atmosphere. As we increase electrification of vehicles and homes and buildings, demand for electricity increases, making it ever more important to ensure the electricity that we use is as clean as possible. So this program offers a simple way for residents to fight climate change and save money. In fact, I learned recently that TenaFly and a few other towns are hoping to become part of the program along with us and other towns. And I'll add that this week we're launching an energy solutions pilot program with the township using the small fee that was set aside as part of the energy aggregation program to help the five towns continue to innovate in the clean energy space. Older homes are particularly vulnerable to increased energy consumption and rising energy costs. This program will help residents to develop a complete, long-term plan to make their homes energy-efficient and comfortable. And the consultation will happen at no cost to residents, so please look out for more about that in the coming week. All this to say thank you again for moving this ordinance quickly on behalf of the Environmental Commission, our partner town, and all residents looking to reduce their carbon footprint in meaningful ways. Any residents with questions about this energy aggregation program or energy efficiency programs, please just feel free to reach out to us at mtcenv@gmail.com. Thanks so much.
Next would be caller with the number starting 917-392. It is your turn to comment, 917-392. Please, for the record, state your name. Keep your comments to three minutes and mute your listening device.
Hi, my name is Eileen Birmingham. I'm calling tonight in support of increased library funding, increased funding for senior services, increased funding for arts and civic events. But really, this call is to address what seems to be the third rail of Montclair municipal spending, the size of the public safety sector. Montclair has a per capita police and fire force like a large city, similar in numbers, but we pay significantly better. Economically, Montclair is not a city. We do not have a large commercial tax base. We do not get large amounts of state aid for our schools like most cities do. Instead, we are responsible for almost, for almost fully funding a relatively large school district. Over the past several years, the cost of police and fire salaries has increased substantially. In just the past two years, the required contribution to the police and fire retirement system has increased by over $800,000, just in two years. Just the pension contribution, which is now over $7 million annually. In 2020, the required contribution was over 33%. This is enormous, especially since our labor contracts are fairly generous. In 2019, the Town Council approved a seven-year contract for firefighters. This was done without much fanfare and unlike contracts for teachers, did not receive much attention. As my dad, a former New York City police officer, said, "For a union to sign a seven-year contract, it must be a pretty good contract." Indeed, I have seen this contract and would ask the town manager and members of the Public Safety Committee to be transparent. What are the cost projections for this contract over seven years and how is Montclair going to afford it? I would ask my fellow residents to compare the current police and fire contracts to those of our teachers to see that there is a pretty stark difference. Since most towns in New Jersey have volunteer fire departments and smaller police departments, they are not dealing with this to the same extent that Montclair is. Year after year, the council has been cutting almost everywhere else to accommodate the growth of the public safety sector because of libraries, senior services, reductions in community events, et cetera. But there is very little left to cut at this point. The only partial solution would seem to be to right-size Montclair's public safety sector to be in line with other towns that have to fully fund their schools and don't have large commercial tax bases. We should look to achieve this by attrition probably. Other towns have done this. Bloomfield, which of course does get substantial aid from the state to fund its schools, did this with their fire department 10 years ago and they are a class ISO 2 fire department, just like Montclair. The economic realities of the kind of town Montclair is in order to move forward to create.
And that noise was your time expiring, so please conclude your comments now.
Thank you. Just wanted to encourage you to create a community where all of our members can thrive. Thank you.
Next would be caller with the number starting 973-747. It is your turn to comment, 973-747. Please, for the record, state your name, mute your listening device, and keep your comments to three minutes.
Thank you. This is William Scott, Co-Chair of the Montclair Housing Commission and also Chair of the NAACP Housing Committee. I just would want to urge the council members to extend the rent moratorium, increased moratorium for another three months. As Mr. Kahn mentioned, this town is going to be faced with a deluge of unconscionable rent increases if we don't get a rent control ordinance. We have been negotiating with the Property Owners Association. As Mr. Ron Simon Ceding said a couple of weeks ago, we have a pretty good ordinance in front of them. Why not take that ordinance and implement that ordinance? And any of the three items that Mr. Ron Simon Ceding mentioned in the Montclair local article can be negotiated by coming to the council, asking for amendments at that point. But this attitude of we've got to have everything we want before we are willing to drop the petition is not the way to negotiate. So at this point in time, I believe we need to go back to the table, see if we can iron out these three remaining issues, not bring up seven or eight new issues because that's not negotiation, that's stalling. So at this point in time, as a landlord in this town for 40 years and having reasonable rents in this community, we have to make sure we maintain rents that are affordable to our seniors, our young generation that's coming up. I'm four generations, I'm fortunate enough to be able to have my son, his family, my grandchildren live in affordable rent units. My daughter is going to be moving into an affordable rent unit in the township of Montclair where she's been born and raised. And this is the, the generations of individuals that need to stay in this town and contribute to this town and have gone to the public school system and want to raise their families and be close to their grandparents and their parents. So let's, let's really think what's at stake here. This is really, really Montclair's future. If we're not going to commit to maintaining diversity and affordable housing, what is this town really about? We can't allow a few rich, wealthy people dictate and say, no, we don't want our seniors to have reasonable rents and our new generations coming up to have reasonable rents and stay in this township. Thank you.
Next would be caller with the number starting 973-868. It is your turn to comment, 973-868. Please, for the record, state your name, mute your listening device, and keep your comments to three minutes.
Yes, good evening. My name is Dr. Renee Baskerville, Montclair Community. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. I'd just like to first start out by thanking you all for your service. And then I'd like to especially thank Mayor Spiller and Councilman Cummings and Councilman Russo for the amazing celebration that you did in collaboration with the public school last weekend at the Catchings Owings Suite. Not only was it an opportunity to celebrate the renovations that the Board of Education did, it was an opportunity to bring community together and celebrating the history and celebrate people that have contributed in a great way to the history of Montclair. So I'd like to thank the three of you for your participation. And while we are looking at community schools, I just want to remind the council and others in the township that our Charles H. Bullock School is indeed a community school. And we don't often include that when we're looking at opportunities for seniors to have activities, when we're looking at perhaps summer programs if we've been displaced from our usual locations and other things. So I just want to remind us that I think it would be a good idea for us to do more in collaboration with the Montclair Board of Education to really make the Charles H. Bullock Community School that which it was promised to the community. You will remember when Superintendent Asnado was there, the promise to the community was that that would become a community location for people to have activities in. Seniors can have activities, camps, summer camps, and whatnot. And so I just wanted to remind you of that. I know how important celebrating community schools were to our mayor and Councilman Cummings and Russo on the past weekend. And so I just don't want us to forget to keep the Charles H. Bullock School in the mix. And thank you for all of your service. I appreciate you guys.
Next would be caller with the number starting 973-744. It is your turn to comment, 973-744. Please, for the record, state your name, mute your listening device, and keep your comments to three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Betty Holloway. I want to thank you for allowing me to comment tonight on behalf of the library. I would like to urge you to support the library with the additional funding to continue their programming. The library provides a valuable service to our community and personally, I have depended on those services to engage in research that is ultimately turnkeyed back in the community. I would not be able to do so without the services that the library provides. Thank you for your consideration and support for our. Thank you for your consideration and support for our library.
Next would be caller with the number starting 973-424. It is your turn to comment. 973-424, please, for the record, state your name, mute your listening device, and keep your comments to three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gere Gro Malloy. I am the current chairperson of the Landlord-Tenant Advisory Committee, supporter of the tenants' organization, former co-chair of the Housing Commission, member of the NAACP Housing Committee, and just straightforward a housing advocate among many other things. First and foremost, I want to thank each of you on the council and even the staff for the work you've been doing around rent control and the rent freeze moratorium. And I am not going to repeat what has been said already by previous callers regarding the rent freeze, the issues and rent control. But what I will say is, it's pretty important that we be able to move forward and that, and this is directly to the property owner, you know, it's just at a point of, of an annoyance that this has gotten to a standstill. While I do understand and respect certain positions, there is just really, at this point, in my personal opinion, no need for a stalemate to happen where, as was repeated multiple times, there were several concessions already made. So having said that, it would behoove everyone, landlords, owners, property managers, anyone who's involved, to really come to the table, if at all possible at this point, and just pass the rent control ordinance. It has been stated that property owners agree that, you know, they can live with certain, in fact, many aspects of the scaled-back rent control ordinance. So it just would behoove everyone to just move forward. A rent freeze or rent moratorium, rent increase moratorium, pardon me, for an extended period of time may cause additional hardships for landlords. However, under the circumstances, and still that we're in a pandemic and an economy that is in an inflation period, it's not fair to be able to raise rents unconsciously on people who are really doing the best they can to stay in town. So I'm just encouraging folks to, you know, end this amicably for, for both sides. And to any landlord out there who's, who's trying to force tenants out, because there are many, with rent increases starting April 1 or whatever, or threatening with evictions, you know, let's just be patient and see if things can get worked out. While I understand you have a business to run, it's just-
And that sound you heard was your three minutes expiring, so please end your comments now.
Thank you. And actually, the, the sound was not audible from my end, but I appreciate the reminder. Thank you very much and good night.
Next would be caller with the number starting 917-536. It is your turn to comment. 917-536, please, for the record, state your name, mute your listening device, and keep your comments to three minutes.
Good evening. This is June Regner. Can you hear me?
Yes.
When I listen to the presentations that talk about Montclair being financially unstable, at the same time as looking that we have some of the highest taxes in the country, there's clearly a major disconnect. How we got there? Let's not even look at that. Let's look at going forward, what we can do, so that our incredibly difficult tax burden allows us to do great things in this town. We need to have schools that aren't collapsing. We need to have libraries that are open. We need to have pools where people can go in the summer. We should have a robust recreational system for seniors, for children, for adults. If you look at the services that provide, surrounding towns provide, ours always come up short. That is wrong and it's problematic. The second thing I would like to know is, what are we doing about the police officer who was found to use racial slurs on social media? I understand that it has been resolved on an administrative level and that there was a 20-day punishment, but what are you, as a town council, doing to speak out about that as a problem? I saw many of you at the AAPI Festival, but I have not heard you speak specifically to this person who is your employee and their behavior and how you feel about it. We just got a $300,000 grant to combat racism, but you guys, who are supposed to be setting a model, an example, are not speaking about this in a very specific and personal way. And that is problematic and enormously disappointing. I think you should be able to do better. Thank you.
Mayor, there are no other callers in the queue.
Thank you, Sheriff Mr. Phan. Thank you, everybody who called in as well. Appreciate that. Next, we have a number of proclamations. The first is declaring March 9th of every year as COVID-19 Heroes Day in the township of Montclair. And this is a proclamation, whereas the COVID, whereas COVID-19 is an illness caused by a virus that can transmit from person to person and is spread across the world, creating a global pandemic that is having catastrophic effects on human life or community or economy. Whereas in response to the devastating effects, Governor Murphy has issued a state of emergency on March 9, 2020. And whereas local and state governments, health departments, public servants have taken bold actions to protect residents, support struggling local economies, and find innovative ways to provide services. And whereas in response to rapid spread of COVID-19, stay-at-home orders, essential workers have stepped up to provide critical services to help protect our community and save lives, sacrificing their own health and safety. Whereas these essential workers have shown deep commitment to ensuring the well-being, convenience of residents, their communities, and help keep everyone safe and the state's economy running. And whereas, public health guidance and policies targeting prevention, such as social distancing, wearing masks, and public staying home to help mitigate the spread of COVID-19, prevent illness, and lessen the burden on individuals in the society. Whereas, designated a day to commemorate essential workers who continue to work during the COVID-19 pandemic is necessary to help bring awareness to these heroes and to demonstrate our continued support for these individuals that have risked their lives every day for the health and well-being of our community members. Now therefore, the mayor and council of the township of Montclair do hereby proclaim March 9th of every year as COVID-19 Heroes Day in the township of Montclair to honor those essential workers. And residents are encouraged to observe the day with activities and programs celebrating these heroes, and I so move.
Second.
It's moved in second at all, favor.
Aye.
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 Opposed abstentions, thank you. And with that, and certainly as we know, we acknowledge this last year, and certainly, you know, the, as the years go by and remain in the pandemic, it certainly has been frustrating on so many levels, but certainly important for us as we hopefully emerge from what has been such a devastating time and see a little bit of light at the end of that tunnel. We also have to continue to recognize the great sacrifice and work that so many of our essential workers did do and continue to do, so we thank them. Appreciate that. Next is a proclamation declaring March as Women's History Month. Councilwoman Schleger, would you mind doing the honors?
Of course, I'd be delighted. This is a proclamation declaring the month of March 2022 Women's History Month. Whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have been instrumental in building our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas, American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer label, labor force of the nation, playing a particularly important part in the establishment of charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions. As our society evolved over time, American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of American life, and now constitute a significant portion of the labor force. Despite making up over half of our nation's college graduates and nearly half of the workforce, too many women continue to feel the weight of discrimination on their shoulders as they face pay gaps, disparities, disparities in health insurance, or inadequate options for family leave. And whereas, Women's History Month is a time to remember those who fought to make the freedom to fully participate in our society as real for our daughters as it has been for our sons. Visionary women met, marched, and mobilized to realize that freedom creating a force that touched every community and took on our highest institutions, their long-fought movement finally succeeded in 1920 with the ratification of the 19th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution, finally giving women the right to vote. And whereas, American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolishment movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and the peace movement, all in an effort to create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas, throughout our history, women have been among the patriots who have defended our land and liberty from every enemy, many women have served in the military and occupations, from pilot to nurse, and in both peacetime and in war. The number of women serving in the military and thus the number of women veterans continues to grow and then continue to enrich our country in civilian life as they bring their skills and patriotism to bear in communities across America. And whereas, despite these contributions, the role of American women in history have been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. And whereas, even having finally reached the White House in our new Vice President, Kamala Harris, women are still not fully or adequately represented at the top tables of organizations and corporations, or in local governing bodies, or in state and national houses of government, and are therefore not being heard or listened to, leaving a woman's very important perspective unrepresented when corporate policies and decisions and local, state, and federal laws are being made. And whereas, Montclair community leaders are working to shine the spotlight on Women's History Month, celebrate women's empowerment and focus on women in history who fought for our rights and whose lives changed the course of history. Now therefore, the mayor and the council of the township of Montclair, New Jersey, do hereby proclaim March 2022 as Women's History Month in our great township of Montclair, and I so move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed abstentions? Thank you very much. And certainly, thank you, Councilwoman Schleger. Appreciate that. And a big thank you to, to everybody as we, as we celebrate the month and certainly celebrate every month. Moving on, our next proclamation. Can I ask Councilwoman Price Abrams, would you mind?
Sure, thanks, Mayor. Recognizing March as cerebral palsy awareness month. Whereas, cerebral palsy is caused by brain injury or brain malformation that occurs before, during, or immediately after birth while the infant's brain is under development. It affects over 17 million people worldwide and more than 700,000 Americans in the United States. Individuals who are diagnosed with cerebral palsy may face significant challenges in day-to-day living that affect their quality of life. And whereas, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, cerebral palsy affects approximately one out of 345 children in the United States. The prevalence of cerebral palsy is higher for children born preterm or at a low birth weight. As a child with cerebral palsy matures, muscle control, muscle coordination, muscle tone, reflex, posture, and balance can be seriously affected. It can also impact the child's fine motor skills, gross motor skills, and oral motor functioning. And whereas, healthcare professionals and educators throughout the country are making bold strides in helping individuals live with the challenges of cerebral palsy, every case of cerebral palsy is unique to the individual. There is no standard therapy that is effective for every cerebral palsy patient. Through physical, occupational, and recreational therapy, as well as oral medications, many cerebral palsy patients lead happy and productive lives in their communities. And whereas collaborative networks, medical institutions, and health agencies working together through those bodies, important strides are made toward developing new drugs and devices to alleviate the symptoms of cerebral palsy. Scientists are also learning how to prevent the disorder and are particularly monitoring prenatal care to minimize the risks in developing babies. With the combined efforts of volunteers and public health agencies, the number of people affected by cerebral palsy can be reduced. And whereas, to encourage public recognition, understanding, compassion, and respect for those affected by cerebral palsy, the township of Montclair is joined by the nation to raise awareness of cerebral palsy. And therefore, the mayor and council of the township of Montclair hereby recognize March as Cerebral Palsy Awareness Month and urge the Montclair community to seek out resources to educate themselves about this disease in efforts to better support all those affected, and I so move.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed abstentions? Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilwoman. And certainly, again, as we know, we say all the time, too, it's important that we do these things to raise awareness and then add our support, et cetera. And thank you for reading that and sharing. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Next, moving forward, we have Resolution R. 22043. Councilwoman Schleger, would you mind doing the, doing the honors? I, I'm not sure if you're muted. Am I muted? I didn't hear. Oh, there we go.
Oh, can you hear me? Something-
Now we can.
Something happened to my computer, so I don't, okay. Whereas invoices against the township of Montclair in favor of the following persons for the amounts set opposite their respective names have been received duly audited and found correct. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the township of Montclair, the County of Essex, that said invoices be and are hereby ordered paid, and that checks be drawn by the Finance Department to the order of such persons for the amounts respectively inherent after stated on the schedule attached here to and made a part here of. This bill list is dated March 1, 2022, the amount is $16,132,542.07, and I so move.
Moved, second, seconded. Any questions, concerns, comments?
Mayor, it's Councilor Yakabelis. I just have one question on, I'm sorry, I can't see everybody, so I don't mean to cut anybody off. Just on page six for PO 2200587, New Jersey's Green Storm Water Management. It's only $45, but I was just curious what that is.
That was a seminar that the chief financial officer took for continuing education.
Great, thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Any other questions, concerns, comments? Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Cummings?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Harlock?
Yes.
Councilwoman Price Abrams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Russo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schleger?
Yes.
Councilwoman Yakabelis?
Yes.
Mayor Spiller?
Yes, thank you. Next is Ordnance O. 2203, it's an ordinance, the township of Montclair, County of Essex, to reauthorize the government aggregation program, I so move.
Second.
Moved. Seconded, questions, concerns, comments?
Mayor, I just have one quick question.
Yeah, and I see, so I'm gonna go, Councilwoman Yakabelis, if you don't mind, Councilwoman Price Abrams, I did see your hand, but I know he's having his visual issue, so let's go to Councilwoman Yakabelis, then Councilwoman Price Abrams, and then Councilwoman Schleger. Go ahead.
Just a quick thing. So I think the, what I've sort of learned in the last year since we did this is the value of whatever we could possibly do from a public education, public awareness perspective. So I just wonder if there's, you know, and since we're also having the budget process on a parallel path right now, if we should talk about an insertion in this, or at least in the budget in some way to cover some marketing or advertising dollars to make sure, you know, we're broadly educating the community on the program. And I think in particular, you know, what we talked about last year with the number of households that are opting up. I know, I think we ended at about 100 households that actually opted up to 100% renewable, and we're one of them here. So just, you know, thinking about how we educate people on the program, making sure it's not misunderstood, because there were a lot of people opting out because of, I think, misunderstanding and false information online. And then at the same time, also encouraging people to opt up. So just want to put that out there. I don't know if it makes sense to include any dollars in the ordinance itself or just to have the conversation in terms of the budget.
Councilman, I think certainly we could always, and I know we're all mindful, as we engage in the process right now, trying to keep that dollar down as much as possible, meaning the tax, any tax increase that we would forego, we know that every dollar we add is a, is a piece that- Councilman, I think certainly we could always, and I know we're all mindful as we engage in the process right now, trying to keep that dollar down as much as possible, meaning the tax, any tax increase that we would forego. We know that every dollar we add is a piece that has a cost to it for sure. But I will see, I will say that part of the work that the energy aggregation program does is also to promote. So certainly we would be, you know, adding to that, complementing that work, if you will. I know that they have postcards they're sending out, social media work that they're doing. I know it because, you know, the number of the mayors, you know, have been asked to talk about it and share. And of course, that information is put out as well. So short answer, Councilman, I know it has a built-in dollar amount that comes with the program to help promote it. That does include some print letters that are sent. Now, the answer to your question is we could always do more short answer, right? It's, it could be a yes. We can, maybe I'd say if you want to work with our Communications Director through Mr. Stafford, of course, to see if there's any, you know, lower cost pieces we can help do that work from. And then, of course, if we need to build anything to supplement the print material that is already being mailed out as part of the program, or maybe it's just literally accompanying, you know, the stuff that's already being mailed out. We can, hey, let's add a flyer to that. What you get, you know, there's no additional cost to us on postage or things like that. I know our Environmental Commission have been great advocates in this work as well and they're always looking to help get the information out. So I think partnering with them also is a good idea to see what do they think? What do we think? How can we help offset costs together to get the information out in a way that has broad reach? But I couldn't agree with you more when you see, you know, our good number of opt-ups to a hundred percent renewable, which is a great thing to see when we talk about. And I think it's going to also depend upon how it is covered out there. I mean, I did look previously at some of the the press reports that were out last time it was done and it bullet pointed, you know, cost, it bullet pointed, you know, dates, it bullet pointed a lot. It had no mention of the fact that it's double the amount of renewable energy that you get through P S E and G, which is the point of the program. It's get the green energy and get it at a same or reduced cost of what P S E and G would be charging us. So I think it's on all of us to kind of make sure that the headline isn't missed, if you will, you know, of, hey, that's the goal of this. And as we heard from the Environmental Commission Chair earlier, great success there. The amount of carbon we've been able to reduce through this program and only more so as we all rely more and more on electricity. So it's been a great success. I will add, since inception of the program, we're at, you know, about a million dollars in savings to our residents overall. So that means that's also, you know, real money. But again, the point of it is the green energy component. And if we can get a little bit of savings on the side, great. But the green energy is the key piece to keep Montclair on the forefront. But that's the longer answer of, yeah, any ways that we can all think of to get better communication out about it, let's do it. And if it does require a little bit of money in the budget, let's see what that might look like, maybe in conjunction with our Communications Director.
Thank you.
Yep, you bet. Councilwoman Price Abrams and then Councilwoman Schlegel.
Thanks, Mayor. And I really just, amplifying in some ways what's also just been said, but I wanted to thank the Montclair Environmental Commission and Suzanne Atman for calling in earlier and speaking publicly about it. And for all the reasons, you know, we've just discussed here among ourselves, you know, this is just, it's win-win in so many ways. And it just speaks well of where government works well in terms of collaborating with other towns in this sense. It sounds like other towns might be looking to opt in as well. I don't know if that changes any of the financial dynamics in any better way for us, but, you know, I know it's something that our Sustainability Officer, who's since retired, you know, was an instrumental person in helping to facilitate as well and look forward to when we'll be staffing up in that regard, you know, in the future, just to continue to find these kinds of ways that we can create win-win opportunities, again, that are better for our air and environment in so many ways and that also save us money. So just a great thing to be endorsing and looking forward to continuing the program. Thank you.
Sure. Councilwoman Schlegel?
Thank you, Mayor. I, on the last go-around of this, I had voted no because I had so many questions about this program. And one in particular was I wasn't a big fan of having everybody in the program and you had to opt out. I didn't think that was fair and the right way to go about this. But since we've had the program, I have to say that I have had complaints from a couple of my constituents that they saw a couple of dollars of savings for a few months. And then they saw an increase and they saw hidden fees, one as high as ten dollars, which I know that Mr. Stafford helped me try to find how that got on there. So I, I'm very skeptical about the pricing of this, of this program. I also, I don't understand with all the advocacy going around the state, why anybody isn't advocating or working or talking to P S E and G? I mean, how, how could we not, how could the advocates not do that? They are the biggest provider. I don't, I don't understand how that's not happening. I also want to know how we are measuring the program. Are we saving money? Do we have actual in our budget for our own town, for our buildings? The Board of Ed, are we saving money? How much did we save? You mentioned a million dollars, but is that, is that true? I mean, not that it, I'm not saying it's not, but how did we measure that million dollars? And I, I just, I just don't, I'm so sorry. I just don't get it. I just don't get it. I, I don't, I don't see how, I don't know. I don't see people saving all that much money at the end of the day and I don't know how we're measuring the clean energy. So that's it. Thank you.
No, it's good, good points, Councilwoman Schlegel. And I just say this to quickly hit a couple of those points, no particular order, but I'll hit them very quickly. The township, the schools, et cetera, we are in our own energy aggregation program, right? So we are in an energy aggregation program. We've been in one for years. And again, it's the concept of buying in bulk. You get a better rate. You can dictate terms more freely. So we separately have been in an energy aggregation program for a long time. Schools have as well. You know, that's part of the process. This one was unique in that it is the residents that are involved in this one. And again, the way that that savings is determined is literally, you know, take the number of residents that we know have opted into it. Look at the rates that are charged by P S E and G. Look at the rates that are charged by this provider. You do the math on it and you get the number. Now, you absolutely right, month to month, you may pay a couple bucks more on one and some less on the other, but at the end of the day, you know, you do the term of the agreement and you say how much was the difference? And that's where that math comes from, to see the savings. So it's a savings over the course of that contract. You definitely wouldn't want to look, well, you could, but you know, month to month is whatever that might be. To your point, advocates, I'd say we'd all press them to do a little more, but I think they're working pretty hard at it, too, with P S E and G. P S E and G right now is on a schedule to get more and more renewable energy. It's a number that they by law have to increase every year. So they are working towards, you know, more and more green energy. Great news. That's a great news. The goal of this program is to always be ahead of them by about double. So whatever P S E and G is up to, right, and they're going to increase every year, right? They're up to the, I think, whatever, twenty-three percent. Next time when they increase that a little bit, ours was forty percent renewable last time, you know, hey, let's try and get that a little higher, a little higher, a little higher as we go out to bids as well. So it's constantly, you know, kind of being ahead of that curve to make sure we're providing even more renewable energy than they are. It's measured and Gray would always do a better job, you know, explaining all this, too, but when, you know, there's certified green energy credits. Some of them are a quote-unquote cheaper version of that, which is really just people buying credits on green energy. You know, ours through the program is legitimate certified green energy from sources that are providing it, you know, not just buying it through it to get the credit. So that, that's the, you know, that's the process it goes through. There's a lot of layers to it. Totally get it. And I think often that Councilwoman, you're spot on in that we're all used to, you know, the person who might knock on the door or something we get in the mail of, hey, try this out and, you know, and then it goes up and, and understand. Luckily, the beauty of this is it's not even just us doing it. It's multiple towns, right? Multiple, multiple towns involved in this, everybody tracking it to see how many of the residents are using it, what the rates are that the residents would have paid, what the rates are that we're paying. I tell you, as we get on those calls, all this is mayors, you know, everybody looks at it and says, hey, did our residents pay any more? And when, you know, the answer is no, that's the first thing. And we go, hey, look, how can we really be environmentally conscious? And then, of course, we push for the other pieces. So that's something that's always looked at as well. But that's the best I can give on what I remember of the questions, Councilwoman, but I certainly still understand skepticism. So I get you. Any other questions, concerns, comments? Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Yeah, I also voted no, as did Councilwoman Schleger the last time on this one as well. I have an issue with its coercive effect that you are opted in instead of, or you have to opt out. You're automatically opted in. And the procedure on the opt-ins and the opt-outs was a little tricky because I know a lot of residents in my ward that had contacted me and said that they opted out and did not, there was a form that came in the mail. They sent it in and they were still put in the program. And then they had a call and there was quite a process there. So I'm not, I don't feel confident in the way that that was set up. And again, you know, some of the points that Councilwoman Schlegel raised as well.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Cummings?
Yeah, Robin, thank you so much for bringing this up because it jarred my memory and that my wife, who actually handles the bill, she had a real issue with our bill. And I think, I can't believe I'm saying this, I actually agree with Mr. Yakabelis that we may need to really educate the public because it is very confusing as to what you're doing and what you're signing up for. I don't know if that's something that Katia can put together that can send directly to residents. But I do remember this conversation to the point where I literally told my wife, call the town manager. Because I just, I couldn't answer it. When she showed me the bill and the difference, it was, she was overcharged. So my response, I think, I think you know where I am on this vote. But I do think that looking at this, we definitely need to do a better job of educating homeowners on this.
Thank you, sir. Other questions, concerns, Councilwoman Price Abrams?
I just wanted to clarify one point that may just be something lost in the space of, again, the complexities people are describing. We still receive our, let's see, there's the distribution comes from P S E and G as our local provider. It's the supply that we are using a different vendor for. So as many people may already understand that, but they are able to, again, as the mayor was describing, source cleaner and more economical by virtue of scale. So I just wanted to mention that as part of the conversation as people are describing what's somewhat confusing because I was even looking at my own bill in the same regard and trying to understand, again, fees and such, but do you think the public education is very valuable? And then we can kind of mark up a bill and sort of use it as a talking point. You know, again, in the mail, it was something else. I think those are great ideas.
Good. Okay. Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Cummings?
Uh, no.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Herlock?
No.
Councilwoman Price Abrams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Russo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schleger?
No.
Councilwoman Yakabelis?
Yes.
Mayor Spiller?
Yes. Right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Next are our discussion items for the March fifteenth agenda. Mr. Stafford, I'm going to turn it to you, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number one would be a resolution that would retroactively authorize and ratify a contract with CRJ Contracting Incorporated of Somerville, New Jersey for labor and equipment required to repair a leak in an eight-inch gate valve on Briar Hill Road and repair the roadway on October sixth of two thousand twenty-one. For various reasons, this work could not be done by in-house personnel and given the magnitude of the work required and that the leak affected the public health and safety of township residents, the Department of Utilities declared an emergency and engaged the subject contract to ensure the necessary immediate repairs. The total cost of the emergency expenditure would be seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-five cents. Item number two is a resolution that would authorize the purchase of, from D F F L M of Flemington, New Jersey and through the New Jersey Cooperative Purchasing Alliance of Morris County, one new twenty-twenty-two Ford F-one-fifty-four-by-four pickup truck in the amount of thirty thousand dollars, thirty thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars for use by the Department of Utilities. This vehicle will be to replace a vehicle that has outlived its useful life and to the extent that it can no longer be used, will be cannibalized or otherwise sold at auction. Item number three is a resolution that would authorize the purchase of, from Route twenty-three Auto Mall of Butler, New Jersey and through the New Jersey Cooperative Purchase Alliance of Morris County, one new twenty-twenty-two Ford Transit one hundred and fifty van in the amount of twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars for use by the Department of Utilities. This vehicle will be used to replace a vehicle that also has outlived its useful life and to the extent that it can no longer be used, will be cannibalized or otherwise sold at auction.
Manager, can I ask a question, Mayor?
Certainly, sir.
Just want to know, these vehicles are all just regular gas vehicles, right? I mean, I guess we need them sometimes for certain types of work, but are we trying to shift our vehicle purchase as a policy towards electric? We're even talking about electric school buses now. They're talking about electric buses all over. People are using more and more electric vehicles, trucks. It's like the wave of the future. Montclair was always ahead. We had six natural gas vehicle cars when I was mayor in two thousand and two. We used them for traffic and, you know, used them for things that they didn't need to be chasing anyone down or carrying heavy equipment. But it was an innovation twenty years ago to have natural gas vehicles. Six of them were purchased by Montclair, first in the country. And I'm just concerned now, we don't want to fall behind here. Can we get some purchases to be electric out of some of these resolutions that are on the agenda here? We have to go with these types of vehicles. They seem to be big industrial vehicles, or am I wrong?
Well, these are work trucks. Exactly. You're correct. And that's why they're gas at this point.
Are we trying to convert wherever we can to electric when things don't have to be, you know, industrial?
When it's practical, yes.
Well, who determines when it's practical? That's the question.
The Requesting Department.
Right. Are we telling the Requesting Department that we would like as a policy to shift where we can to electric vehicles? I mean, I'd just like to suggest that. I can't tell anybody what to do, but I'd like to suggest that we start encouraging purchase, just like the electric leaf blowers. I see this electric snow blower on TV being advertised during the winter that you could buy. The very heavy industrial electric snow blower. And I guess we can buy what we want. It's got to be able to do the job, of course, but we've got to set the standard here in Montclair. We're the progressive, advanced community on environmental issues. Let's buy everything we can. It's electric unless it really, really has to be, you know, industrial and gas. Because we've got to, if you can't, nobody can understand what's going on with Russia and all, with Ukraine. One thing is clear, the Russians sell gas and oil and, you know, and we can't, we can't be buying from them anymore, okay? If we want to really stop this new dictator, you know? So we've got to really, for our own interests as well as the environment, stop buying non-electric and non, you know, alternative energy equipment. That's all I had just to say that. Thank you.
If I may amplify before, Mr. Manager, before you continue. You know, honestly, I also saw the group and I'm mindful, we're not talking about fire engines and police cars, but I actually drive an electric car. But that said, I know they can be very powerful, the batteries. And for the kind of work, and I don't know specifically what, I know there, you know, four to the line of pickup trucks that are electric. I know that, you know, many of the car, there's a huge array of vehicles that are now electric. So I recognize that would set back the purchasing of these if we're going to suggest to you that we price what the differential would be for an electric. But I do think it's something for consideration for the reasons that Councilor Russo just articulated. You know, it's, it's a values thing. It's, it's actually, there'll be savings in terms of what gas costs versus electrical costs for charging are. So I don't know when that amortizes into savings. Because even if the vehicle has an upfront charge a little higher, the fueling will be less. So those are things, I don't know where we take it to next, but I guess we can talk about it in the next two weeks to provide feedback if there's any willingness to revisit this. There's a few, I guess there's three.
Mayor, I'll just comment as well. I think, you know, for me, it's about probably a multi-year plan because obviously the supply chain issues, anyone who's tried to buy a car. I bought a car last weekend and I got the only one that I wanted. It was in all of North Jersey and paid through the nose for it. So there's a supply issue, but then there's also the infrastructure issue to pair it. So I think, you know, it's the council's responsibility and we should have a committee, if it's probably the Education Committee that handles environmental policy, to look at, you know, how do we, how do we just phase in a requirement that these purchases take place? And then how do we accompany that requirement with upgrades to our own infrastructure, frankly? Because if we're going to have electric pickup trucks, you know, where are they going to be charged, for example? So I don't dispute the need for these. I'm looking at the memo that accompanied this and obviously. memo that accompanied this and obviously these vehicles are all 17 to 20 years old and all but one have over 100,000 miles on them and they're very far from eco-friendly and what we buy now will be much more eco-friendly than these are. But I do agree with my colleagues that we should move in this direction sooner or later, but that we have the responsibility to, one, understand where the marketplace is today and two, make sure that we're creating supportive infrastructure in the town and on municipal property to actually be able to sustain a vehicle fleet. And so I just think that's a longer term conversation that we need to engage in and planning. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think the beauty of all involved is I know that our Environment's Commission is actively working, I think, even to get grants around this specific area to do a fleet analysis and to determine which vehicles would be best suited to go electric and which ones are, you know, the technologist isn't there yet or the need doesn't permit it to be used. But I'm sure to answer, they're a good vehicle for that as well, councilmen, as you noted. Then they, of course, obviously advise the Education Committee, but I know the Environmental Commission is keenly looking at this issue as well specifically. And, you know, hopes to provide some assessment in that, which probably does start with, I think, a fleet analysis to kind of determine what we could do where. And then, of course, I agree with you, then it's on us to figure out what the planning is to make that happen over whatever period of time we think is affordable in nature. Yep. Okay. Mr. Stafford?
Item number four is a resolution that would authorize the purchase of, from Gentilini Ford of Woodbine, New Jersey, and through the New Jersey Cooperative Purchasing Alliance of the Cranford Police, three new 2022 Ford F-250 four-by-four pickup trucks in the total of amount, total amount of $104,247. They are $34,749 each. Again, for use by the Department of Utilities. And like the others, these vehicles will be to replace those that have outlived their useful lives and to the extent that they can no longer be used, will be cannibalized or otherwise sold at auction. And I believe one of the councillors mentioned the supply chain, the department has held off on purchasing or requesting authorization to purchase further to the approved capital ordinances, given the pandemic for several months, and it is not anticipated, assuming governing body approval, on the 15th of the purchase of these vehicles, that we will see them anytime before the mid-fall of this year.
Mr. Stafford, and excuse me for interrupting, Mayor. To that point, is it, is it helpful if we were in action on these tonight? To speed up that process? Does it speed the process up by two weeks?
Two weeks? I don't, it's up to you. I don't think two weeks is drastic. I think that it won't hurt us or help us to such a degree where it's emergent tonight.
Okay, I'll leave it alone. Thank you.
State local redevelopment and housing law provides that the governing body may by resolution determine that a proposed area may be determined to be in need of redevelopment according to the criteria set forth therein, subject to review and recommendation of the Planning Board. On August 24th of 2021, having determined that it is in the public interest, this governing body by resolution R-21-178 and through the Township Manager authorized a study by the Planning Department staff to determine whether Block 3307, Lot 7, and Block 3304, Lot 1, meet the statutory criteria and qualify as an area in need of redevelopment. Planning staff is at present preparing that report. The Economic Development Committee recommends that the redevelopment plan also include Erie Park and the commuter parking lot, that is Block 3307, Lot 8. Development is not anticipated, though improvement as part of the redevelopment plan is. Accordingly, an area in need of rehabilitation designation is required. Item number five is a resolution that would authorize the required study to determine whether Block 3307, Lot 8 qualifies as an area in need of rehabilitation. The township has for many years been a member of various cooperative pricing councils with the purpose and result being the realization of substantial savings on various goods and services through the cooperative bidding process. To that point, our qualified purchasing agent recommends that the township join the North Jersey Wastewater Cooperative Pricing System. Item number six is a resolution that would approve the joining of the cooperative and authorize the execution of the agreement required for same. Item number seven is a resolution that, given that the state of emergency in connection with the COVID-19 pandemic continues to exist, would extend the temporary moratorium on rent increases through and including May 31st of 2022.
I have some, excuse me, Mayor? I have some questions about that. Would this be the time to discuss this?
Sure. Counselwoman Schlegel, please.
Okay. Thank you. So I have some questions that maybe we could hopefully get answered tonight or maybe by the next meeting when we, when this comes up for a vote. So is the rent freeze extension, these extensions, are they, are, is it the intention to do these extensions until we have an ordinance in place? Or are we going to do these every three months? But on piggybacking on that, what is the status of a referendum? Is the clerk curing signatures at this time? Are we moving towards a referendum? And if we are, when might that be? And which would kind of dictate if we are freezing till the referendum, are we talking three months? Are we talking six months? 30 days? I have no information about the referendum or what's going on. So also keep in mind, every, when there is a referendum and we have to vote, like a regular election, like coming up on March 8th next week, schools are closed, so people can go into the school buildings to vote. So if we had a referendum solely for the rent control ordinance, we'd have to close our schools to have a referendum, which is a big deal. So is there any update from the clerk or the manager and on the referendum curing of the signatures? And are we going to keep doing this every?
Well, the last part I can answer, Councilwoman, if we've got four votes to do it, that's the easy answer on that one, right? But specifically to your question, Mr. Burr, can you speak to the curing process along with the clerk to tell us where we're at with that?
Yes, Mayor. Councilwoman Schlegel, we are, we're still working on counting signatures and trying to cure those signatures in order to certify the petition. So we're, there's a few more signatures that are needed, I believe, by the clerk. Once those signatures are counted, the clerk will be able to certify the petitions.
Do you think that will happen in the next week? Two weeks before the next meeting?
Well, if, if, if there, if the signatures are obtained, it would happen, it would happen. Like, I can't tell you exactly when because we're still counting, we're still waiting for people to send in their petitions to cure the process. The question is, is what if we don't receive those, those signatures? Or we are unable to determine whether those petitioners who sent in petitions confirm whether they want to join the petitioners? That may require us to not be able to certify the petition. So it's a question I can't answer directly. We're hopeful. We're hopeful.
Okay, so we have, it's open-ended.
I think in a practical sense, Councilwoman, though, I think by our next meeting, we'll have a good sense of, are they all cured or not? And then by that date, we will be able to make the determination, do we just move forward with the referendum? Because they have been cured, that would give a window where it would occur if we went on the shorter end of when you could do a referendum, you know, sometime in May, I believe. If it, you know, if that was the case, and as the attorney noted, if we're unable to cure, it means that, you know, quite frankly, the other side hasn't met their burden of showing that the people were legitimate signers and then we're in a different situation in that the courts would be then told that, you know, that the numbers they said they had, they don't seem to have, or people are not verifying they have, right? And again, I won't say too much more and it's legal, but, but short order, I think timeframe is still within the next meeting. I think we'd know a lot more.
Okay. So it looks like we are going to have a referendum because there's no agreement and doesn't seem like there's going to be one. So if we do have a referendum, it would be a regular voting situation where we would go into our voting, to our polls to vote. Is that, we haven't had a referendum in many, many years. I can't remember the last one we had. Is that how it would work?
Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, that's how it would work. All 14 polling sites would be open and they'd be operating from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And the date would be May 10.
May 10th, okay. And we, and the schools would have to be closed, I guess, that day, right?
Well, we can't make that call. There's been times where the schools are open. But recently I have noticed that Dr. Pons will close the schools when there's an election.
Okay. 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 Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can I just add on to Counselor Schlegel's questions? Because I'm curious too now. Now we know a date, but that date's dependent upon, as Paul said, as our attorney said, whether this is all cured. Now, as Robin said, it's costly to have these. Now, we did have a referendum just a couple of months ago, didn't we? It was the, it was the school, elected school board, but it was at the time, Robin, correct me, it was at the time of another election, so it didn't cost us anything.
That's right. It was, it was attached to that. And it's not a standalone.
Right, right. That's great. And I was just curious again, I asked the clerk this, because I did ask somebody this while back who said, oh, no, you can't just make it coordinated with the primary, but there's a primary election, June, which would be nice to have at the same time that we're already having an election. You know, the primary election for Congress is being held, so can I ask the clerk, maybe, is there any way we can ask them to allow us to schedule it then? To save, I think it costs us $50,000 to $75,000, doesn't it? Unless, nobody turns out unless, you know, there's a big election. So Angelis, can we do it on June 5th or whenever the primary is, rather than May 8th? Who told you it has to be May 8th?
Counselor Russo, the special election would be the 10th of May. We are not, we are, I have inquired and we are not permitted to hold a special election during the primary election, nor are we permitted to place any questions on the ballot during a primary election. So if we will put a question on the ballot, it would have to be November for the general.
I know, you know, I know why, because in primaries you have to declare what party and then there's that limitation on party. Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, that explains it. But it's unfortunate that this bureaucratic issue costs us money, right? Thank you, Robin. Thanks for bringing it up.
Hey, any other questions or Mr. Stafford, please?
Item eight is a resolution that would request that the County of Essex commission a traffic study of the intersection of Watchung Avenue, Park Street, and Watchung Plaza for traffic calming, safety, and use enhancements.
Mayor?
Can we do that tonight?
Yes, if I was going to say, I'd like to actually move this tonight. We've got two county commissioners that are waiting to receive this to action on it. So I'd like to make a motion to move this item.
I'll second that. It's moved and seconded. Assume it's pretty clear for any questions, concerns, comments?
I'll just, one favor. Sure. Councilman Yakobellis? I'll just comment. My thanks to Councilwoman Schlegel, you know, who obviously as a resident before I was elected, you know, Watchung Plaza is a place that's been on my radar for a long time. But our very first meeting and conversation, we walked around Watchung Plaza and she pointed to Watchung Plaza and that specific area and talked about how high it is and has been on her priority list to address it. So I know the people of the Second Ward have, you know, been lobbying for it and people across the whole town have been asking for it for a long time. So we've had conversations with county officials and they've asked us, you know, sorry, we've asked them what they need from us and this is specifically what they've asked for. And I want to thank the Law Department because we've gone back and forth with the Law Department on the verbiage here. And it's important because it's a little bit distinguished from some of the just traditional traffic studies in that, you know, we're asking for consideration of the safe, complete streets plan. We're asking for consideration for people with disabilities and obviously pedestrians and people on bicycles. But to take a little bit of time and think about a creative solution for this intersection, so it's not just, oh, we need two more stop signs or an always stop, or we need a blinking light, or we need a traffic light. Maybe there's something even more creative like a traffic circle. So, you know, this is to get that process going. So I just wanted to comment on that and thank Councilwoman Schlegel for the support and advocacy.
Okay.
Thank you for saying that.
All in, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Okay. Thank you very much, officers. Mr. Stafford?
Lastly, sir, during the public hearing for the site plan application for the Seymour Street redevelopment project, the applicant's traffic engineer testified that four-way stop signs are necessary at the intersection of Glen Ridge Avenue and North Willow Street to ensure safety. This conclusion was supported by the Planning Board's traffic engineer. Resultantly, the Planning Board resolution granting site plan approval included a condition that the applicant is responsible for installation of a four-way, flashing stop signs at the subject intersection. Item nine is an ordinance that would amend Township Code Section 327-9.1 multi-way stop intersections to include the subject intersection. And that's all I have.
And it's appreciated that they've already done that. So that's nice. So that four-way stop is up and blinking, which is great, but our ordinance will be able to match it.
Mayor, can I actually ask a question on that?
Sure.
I thought, I read that the signs got taken down. So, Mr. Stafford, can you clarify the status of that intersection?
Two, the signs were taken down on the weekend because of folks not paying attention to the fact that there were two signs and not four signs and it being determined that it was a traffic hazard for motorists. So they will be replaced when all four signs can say four-way stop signs, once the ordinance is passed.
Is the, is that contingent on the availability of the signs or us passing the ordinance or both?
No, it's contingent, I believe, only on passage of the ordinance.
Okay. So I guess I'm wondering, and then I know obviously it's an ordinance and typically you need a second read and you need a hearing and you need a resolution to make it an emergency and accompany it. I'm just concerned about that intersection. So I don't know.
But, Councilman, I have the question. Mr. Stafford explained this logic to me. Before we read the ordinance and can do it, it was okay to put up the four-way stops, so we had four stop signs up. But the little thing underneath that says four-way, we weren't allowed to put up without the, like, something about that doesn't make sense to me here.
There were two stop signs that said, that said four-way stops.
Gotcha.
But there were not four stop signs, four sides. So.
Oh, there were four signs in the sense of two were blinking as you were on Glen Ridge and two regular stop signs were on South Willow.
And they were covered, they were covered and somebody took the covers down, is my understanding. In other words, they're not supposed to be up because this ordinance is not passed.
Okay, so it's the ordinance. Again, so I'm going to the council's point of, the four-way stops were in place because I drove it. My question was, are you saying that the little sign underneath that says four-way, we couldn't add without the ordinance being that somebody pulled the covers off? Or are you just saying?
Correct.
Re-covered up? Okay.
So, if I may, will they be up as soon as tomorrow? Because it's like a very simple thing to finish and fix at this point?
I can't put them up until the ordinance is passed. So.
Just one of these things. Okay.
Yeah. So that's what I was getting at, is can we advance it tonight? But then I know we have to do a resolution and we need five votes for an emergency.
Well, there is a safety matter here, so I don't know if it's an emergency.
We could pass this tonight?
Madam Clerk, let me ask this, because I know it's the case of law ordinance, this isn't even on the second read. Do you have, given the paper that we have to put this in, would you have enough time, even if we tried to do it as an introductory ordinance tonight, to properly notice for the next one prior to the next meeting, given the deadlines to publish in paper? Do you have that timeframe?
I do not have enough time.
Okay.
To be clear, that's not a Montclair issue. That's a paper, a newspaper issue.
No, I got that, Mr. Stafford. I guess I know your clarify for everybody, but before we went down too far, I hear your councilman and councilwoman, but I just want to make sure we had that. It doesn't appear we do. So, you know, just noting that.
Yeah.
We often get held up by that, by that kind of stuff. All right. Well, let's try and move that one forthwith because it was up and down and at least that's not that confusing. So, great.
Can we notice, can we put it on the agenda for next? Can we notice, can we put it on the agenda for next meeting with the emergency piece that would actually then let us pass it? In other words.
It's an ordinance, uh, council.
Now, it, it, what has to happen is it has to be introduced, then second reading and public hearing, and at that meeting, after the second reading and public hearing, the council can adopt a resolution if it desires, declaring an emergency so that the ordinance would take place without the normal required by statute estoppel period. We can't get there until we have that second reading slash public hearing, which presumably would be April five, uh, but I defer to Ms. Bermidas Nieves.
Yes, you're correct. It would be first reading on the fifteenth of March and the public hearing on the fifth of April. And if you have the resolution, then you can make it effective on the fifth of April.
We have to wait a month. Can't do anything tonight, right?
Well, Counselman Russo, you just summed it up in short.
Well, actually, respectfully, Mayor, that's not true. You can introduce it tonight. We just can't get it in the paper because we're at the, we're at the mercy of the publication. So you can introduce it tonight and then the here, the public here is still gonna be on April fifth, but if you'd like to introduce it tonight, feel free.
Yeah, why don't we at least get that going?
Well, yeah, okay. Well, I guess, I guess if we're doing it for show, because it does nothing to actually get it done quicker, but.
Whose ward is it in?
Third ward.
Third ward.
Wait a minute, Bob.
You want to introduce it, Laurie?
I, I mean, I recognize what we've just said. It doesn't actually make it faster. What I want to know is what can we do in the meantime that doesn't require an ordinance and by way of making that a more, uh, clearly marked. Is, is there anything that can be done short of what's in the ordinance, but that would provide a better, safer intersection?
Uh, not that I'm aware of. I, I had the police department, including the traffic bureau commander, look at it this weekend. Uh, and, and we've done what they've suggested.
Which is?
Remove the two signs because they're not ordnanced, put the ordinance on the agenda, pass it, declare an emergency so that we don't have to wait for the estoppel period and then have the signs put back up.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stafford. All right. Uh, moving through, Mr. Stafford, any, uh, comments?
No, sir, that's all I have.
Uh, okay, and Mr. Deputy Manager?
No comment, Mayor.
Uh, Township Attorney?
No comment, Mayor.
Deputy Attorney?
No comment, Mayor, thank you.
Uh, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Tuesday, March eighth, we'll have a special election. Uh, all fourteen polling sites will be open. That information is on our township website. Polls are open from six AM to eight PM. If you want to vote by mail, the last day to make that request to the county clerk is the seventh of March. That's the day before the election, three PM. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's go with, um, Councilman Cummings.
Mr. Mayor, thanks a lot. Um, I want to start out by, uh, thanking you and Counselor Russo, as, uh, Dr. Baskerville indicated, for showing up for the Catching Owen Suite, uh, refurbished. That was a really great event. Uh, we were joined there by, um, Senator Gill, Assemblyman Giblin, and Congressman Payne, along with the family members of Mr. Owens and Mr. Catchings, and it's just a true one of those things, rare that we all get like what I consider old Montclair together. But it was, it was fun. Mr. Scannellberry, your name was mentioned, but you weren't there, so we had to cover for you. You know, you consider yourself a real Montclair guy, but I'll leave you alone on that one. Uh, then, uh, want to really give the bid, um, some, uh, credit for, uh, some anniversaries that are coming up, specifically the fiftieth anniversary for the, uh, DLV Lounge on Bloomfield Avenue. Again, you know, Mr. Marable is a longtime resident, you know, and it's just awesome that he's been there for fifty years. They actually requested that the council come by on March fifteenth to, uh, just say hello to Mr. Marable. Um, I think this is one of those things, if you're from Montclair, you'll know, you'll remember the Willow bar up the street where, uh, currently Mr. Um, Hurlock has his offices, as well as the, uh, old, uh, Starrington House. I'm going way back on you guys here. But, uh, that is what the DLV means, particularly to the township. It's a great establishment and a great location, so I, I hope we can stop by probably before a, um, before we get to a council meeting. I, I know Mr. Russo was able to do that tonight for Joe D's party, so I'm sure he'll be able to do that on March fifteenth. Right, Joe? And then I want to, um, announce, March nineteenth, I'm gonna have a community meeting. And that meeting, we're gonna discuss Glenfield Park, Nishwayan Park, and Essex Park, which are all scheduled to get scheduled to have some refurbishing, as well as an update on the Essex Hudson Green, Greenway, and conversations on the food desert that was designated in town recently, giving folks some, uh, information on what that means for them. And also the remediation of three ninety-nine Orange Road. So those are some of the topics, as well as the annual conversation on Lackawanna Plaza. And finally, um, Counselor Price Abrams and I have been working on, with some local groups on the unhoused population in town, and having some monthly meetings with, uh, local nonprofits to kind of figure out a way to really support this group. Um, there's been some really, really good conversations. Next step is to kind of get someone from the township to be on this group so that, you know, we are all collaborating together. So I think this is something that's got a, a long-term fix that we're looking to do for that population in town. And I think it's a very important endeavor and I look forward to working more with the group and the folks who are participating in that. Uh, so, Mr. Mayor, thanks again for this opportunity to speak and I wish you all a very good night.
Yes, sir. Uh, Councilwoman, uh, Price Abrams.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and thanks, Council Cummings. I think I'll, I'll just, uh, segue to something else that we worked on, uh, together, which is, uh, is a long-term project. We are, um, reviewing some of the boards and, uh, commissions, really starting with the advisory committees. And that has been, uh, something we've talked about, uh, before, but in conjunction with that, and I just, I would do want to thank the clerk, um, our communications director, Ms. Woke, um, uh, for finalizing what is a new volunteer information form, just show and tell here. Um, it is now available. Um, it's a cleaned up version, actually, I apologize, and our, our, um, deputy attorney, uh, actually took the first stab at a draft, forgive me for that piece, and, um, so we, we've cleaned up the form, made it, uh, more user-friendly, but, um, importantly, what it has, um, that was necessary is the ability, if you're using it online, you can directly link to the board or commission or committee that you're interested in, uh, and there'll be an attachment in paper if you pick it up in paper. But to understand if there are areas for, um, your particular membership category. So, for example, that came up with, uh, it's true of the landlord-tenant housing committee, it's true of, uh, the Civil Rights Commission, it's true now of the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee. Yep, um, as well as, I think, the Housing Committee or Commission. So, there's an opportunity for you to identify, you know, I am a landlord or I am a participant in a particular kind of organization that makes me um, a required category, and we'd like to know that so we can balance out the representation, um, for all these, uh, these community, um, for our, our committees that would represent different organizations in town. So we look forward to inviting the public now. The form is available. We really do encourage you to consider where you may want to make a contribution and we invite you to do that. Um, contact the clerk's office or look for it online. Maybe, can I ask, Madam Clerk, why don't you just tell us, if you would, where it's found? You just walk through the folks?
Sure, if you go to our township website and you go to government, you hover over the top where it says government, you click municipal clerk, and then on the left-hand side, you'll see volunteer committees. And the form is there.
Thank you, and the attachment page is.
Is also there, yes.
Thank you very much. Um, I will touch on, uh, also had the opportunity to celebrate with a few, um, openings of new businesses. We have, uh, Porta, which is, uh, a wonderful new restaurant on Bloomfield Avenue, and a number of us, um, uh, were there in celebration with them last week one night and, um, their door, they, they have other, I, I'm sure that other members may, may comment because, um, it leaves such an impression, but eat, drink, and be honest is what's written on these three doors that stand in front of the establishment. It's just on Bloomfield Avenue, sort of diagonally opposite the claret. So, uh, they have representation in other parts of the state, in Asbury and in Jersey City and, and elsewhere, so, um, an, another wonderful contribution to our downtown area. Uh, then on the weekend, um, the mayor and I were at One River Art School, which is part of the arts complex at Seymour Street, and so a really beautiful new facility. There, the place was full of, uh, children and, and adults who were, you know, looking into taking art classes and it's just another part of that vibrant, um, community that's being kind of cultivated there. And, and as a reminder, that open art space is something that we have the ability to sort of program, and if people have ideas, I hope you'll come forward. You might bring them to the Arts Commission, or you certainly could bring them to any of us to propose a use of that space that we're gonna bring it to life and hopefully in the warmer weather. Um, I wanted to acknowledge while we're on the arts of that, um, Mr. Stafford had worked, uh, in a furious pace to accommodate some high, a, a big, important movie is being filmed in town and that's part of, um, our participation on something that the state has encouraged, which is the citing of, of film, uh, production, you know, throughout the state in municipalities that, that wish it. And, uh, there was, there were a lot of, um, demands that even, I think, they acknowledged in the end weren't really feasible and reasonable, and Mr. Stafford worked, uh, pretty tirelessly to try and help meet their deadlines, and I know part of it's in the third ward, part of it I know is in the second ward, and Counselor Schlegler, uh, also was engaged, so, um, just wanted to acknowledge with appreciation that that is off and running and with thanks again to, you know, your efforts, Mr. Stafford, there. Um, I want to go back to this little, uh, various topics, but, you know, Ukraine, which we all acknowledged, it's just been such a painful thing to watch. What can we do to help? Uh, I wanted to acknowledge that there was an interfaith gathering. Um, I know some of my colleagues were able to be there in person, but I was able to join even just online and really felt almost like I was in the room with people, um, just an expression of, um, you know, through songs, through readings and other things, and, and the gathering of community to, to just, um, you know, will something different to happen and to bring ourselves together, uh, to try and send out something like peace. Um, it's, whether it does anything or not, I think it does something for the people who participate, and I, I'm glad that I was able to participate at least that way. Um, I think lastly, um, oh, I do have a question, very, very switching gears. Um, the Midtown Deck, I just wondered if anybody might be able to update me on when that is expected to be opened? We don't know yet.
I don't have a timeframe. Uh, we've pushed back what our anticipated time, uh, frame was twice at least, so I'm, I'm not, I'm not able to give you a time at this point. Uh, when I do know a reasonable time, I will certainly, uh, forward that to the governing body or have it forwarded to the governing body. Uh, but at this point, I, I can't say. They're, they're engaged in punchless work at this point.
Okay, well, and, and for the members of the community who are, you know, still listening, just so you know, um, you know, we are hopefully very close, but as you heard, not quite open yet. Um, and I know there's a conversation around ensuring that we have proper signage, so we can really direct people to where there's the ability to park downtown and to hopefully, you know, have people participating in all the ways that they want to enjoy town and, again, find a place to park. Um, the last thing I really want to comment on though is, um, you know, with regard to where we are on the rent control ordinance, um, you know, I know that the parties, um, represented through, you know, someone on each side of the property owners and the, uh, tenants, you know, had been engaged and it sounds like they made a, a lot of prog- progress, uh, a lot of concessions, and we find ourselves still with this gap, and so, you know, while we're waiting on things like whether we can certify the petition or can't, I still just really want to encourage those parties to return. Take, take one more round at least to, to say what can we do to sort of bring resolution. Um, it's in the interest of the town. I, I think the ordinance that sounded like it was coming together, provide something to each side that is different than the original in many ways. Um, you know, perhaps it's, perhaps it's a better ordinance, uh, in a more rounded way, you know, for the time that it's taken to hash it out. But I think it could really be in the interest of everybody if, if a solution can be found, and I really do encourage those parties to to come forward one more time in the next, you know, before our next meeting. Let's see if you can take that charge to go forth and, and, and just come to terms that we could hopefully, um, adopt. Uh, I think there's, I think there's a commitment among several people that if the parties can um, find some agreement that we would very likely, uh, be willing to move that forward. Um, so I, I think that will be a real plus and a value added for the town to, to sort of take this. Um, what's turned into such a, a long, a negative and, and difficult thing and let us move forward in a healthy way for the town. Um, again, for affordability, but for the fair practices for the, for those who own properties and their ability to sort of run, run their businesses. So, with all that said, um, also reminding folks, uh, as the, as the clerk had given the update on the upcoming election, uh, for the Board of Ed, if you don't know all the candidates, the Legal Women Voters did a really wonderful program, which I've gone back to watch. I missed it in person, but you know, that's a resource for you as you are considering who you want to vote for. And with that, I say thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Councilwoman Schlegler?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of short things. I, um, this past Saturday night, I had friends visiting from Fanwood, New Jersey, who came, were coming to go to the Wellmott to see the U2 tribute band, and we went out to dinner with them. I, we didn't go to the concert, but, um, I just wanted to say that wow, the town was back in full swing. Every restaurant was busy. There were tons of people outside. So many people going to the concert. It was so great to see. And, um, and I hope it continues, especially now that the weather's getting warmer and, um, and it was just, it was great. It was like old times. We haven't seen that in a while. I also wanted to say that last night, uh, Councilman, uh, Yakabelas and I were on a a, a Zoom interview, and soon the, um, the, there'll be an announcement of this, the skate park is going to get a very nice grant. I think it's a, a surprise. We have to wait for it, but, um, it was a very reward, it was one of the best Zooms I've ever been on, ever. It was great. It was, um, there were a lot of young people on it from the skate park and the Skate Essex, um, parents and, um, and I, and I think the grant is going to be very favorable for us and they will make the announcement soon, and it's very exciting, so, um, I'll let them share that good news when, in, in, probably in a few days. So, um, so that's it for now. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Councilwoman. I don't think that quite counts as you sharing their good news first, but it's pretty close. I'm just gonna say, it's pretty close, but. But thanks for sharing that.
Okay, I'll let them guess.
Uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Deputy Mayor, please.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. A couple of things real quick. Uh, we've got a, a bunch of new businesses that have come into the town, which really speaks to the resilience of, of our town and of the people of our town. I want to welcome Spiro Harrison. It's a law firm that recently moved, uh, from another town in New Jersey to Montclair. Uh, and it, again, this is, um, this is great. I mean, not only are we getting the restaurants and the stores, which is very good, but we're also getting a lot of businesses and I think you're gonna see a lot more of that post-pandemic as we come out of this because a lot of people, quite frankly, want to work here. They want to be here. They don't want to go to the city anymore, so. Looking forward to a lot more of that and to a lot more openings and, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. You're, you're, you're spot on, and we hear it from, from last number of council people talking about the different restaurants that have opened, different businesses that have been opened, you know, whether it's arts, um, food, uh, you know, a law firm, others, as you know. Um, absolutely, you know, you're, you're starting to see it. It's great stuff and, um, you know, all good news, all good news. Uh, Counselman Yakabels?
Thanks, Mayor. I'll be very quick. You know, we have the State of the Union tonight, probably the most important one in my lifetime. Um, for the school elections, I just really want to encourage everybody to do your homework. There are nine candidates. Get to know who these candidates are, read things about them, watch the, you know, the forums and the forums to come and make an educated decision. Uh, in terms of Ukraine, I want to thank the over two hundred and sixty people that have donated to my fundraiser. We've now raised enough money to provide thirty-two mobile medical units to the EU nations to the west of Ukraine, um, which is really, really powerful, so it's doctors, medical equipment, uh, being deployed to the border to receive those refugees. So the people in Montclair should be really proud. I've been in direct talks with the International Rescue Committee, um, on specifically what our dollars are going towards. And so it's a really big deal to know just one town, Montclair, New Jersey, is responsible for thirty-two. is responsible for 32 medical units so far. That's just some what we've raised so far. So I just really want to thank the over 260 people that have donated to that. Um, and thank everybody who is uh, participating in the interfaith service uh, that Councilwoman Price Abrams mentioned earlier. It was a really beautiful service to bring together so many different faiths in one mission for us to pray and send thoughts and healing energy to the people of Ukraine in this really tough time. Um, with that, I'll conclude my comments. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilman Russo.
Yes, mayor. I'll try to be very short, but I just want to reiterate again that the Polish people are really opening the doors to the Ukrainian refugees and Poland is a country that we really need to help. I remember Lech Walesa, who was the head of the Solidarity Union and he became president. He became leader of Poland many, many years ago. He came to Montclair when I was mayor and the solidarity symbol, that whole emblem that they used is what we need to have right now, a solidarity with Ukraine and with Poland, their neighbor who's taking so many people in. It's really incredibly wonderful to see that. My wife Christine's Polish background and family is linking me closely with that. So thanks to everyone who's helping with this terrible, terrible. It's like, it's like we've got Hitler all over again, you know? And these, these things that happened during the Second World War, we never thought we'd see this type of uh, complete invasion of an innocent, un, unthreatening nation whose president really gives us inspiration also. Um, the, the board, it shows you, we got to participate in elections. So people voted for a board of ed, elected board of ed this Tuesday, uh, next Tuesday actually is your chance to get out there and decide. There's nine great people. I mean, I've watched all the debates. I know many of them. And I, it's hard to decide. It's hard to really decide. They're all good people and um, I'll have to choose two, I guess, in the end, which, which we all do. But at least we have a very vibrant group of conscientious, experienced people. A lot of them have backgrounds in education. And I think that's very healthy for the Board of Ed. Uh, and finally, I did go with the counselor uh, Bryce Abrams, Mayor Spiller and Counselor Schlegler to the opening of the, the uh, Porta Restaurant, which I think I mentioned last week was going to have the opening. It was just great because we go down to Asbury Park, Ocean Grove, Neptune all the time in the summer. And we always went to Porta and we always said, my wife said, you know, I wish we had a place uh, that had some, some of those items that they have. There's a great focaccia pizza. There's all kinds of mozzarella and then there's the the dollar ice cream cone you get at the end if you're a kid. Um, it's a gelato cone actually. So here we are. We have Porta in Montclair. And it's really great to have them. I want to welcome them again and thank them for the, the opening the other night. Um, I did go tonight to something, uh, this is a nonpartisan government, but we've got a very, very unified feeling about the fact that the county of Essex has shown such leadership during the pandemic. We were actually, our county was actually a model for others around the state. And that's the credit of the county executive, Joe DiVincenzo. And our county commissioners now, used to be freeholders, but now commissioners. So I want to give a shout out to Commissioner uh, Carlos Pumaros, who covers the Montclair area. And of course, our own local favorite son commissioner Brendan Gill for the work that the county executive, county commissioners have done. Uh, with our former mayor, uh, Mayor Jackson being the one who really behind the scenes gets everything done as the county administrator. They did a tremendous job of helping us get through the pandemic. Now, it's almost, it's almost over, we hope. It's going to be an endemic. We're always going to have problems. We're always going to need to be cautious and you know, make, make sure we protect ourselves and have vaccines and wear masks when we need to and we can. Um, but it's coming to an end. I'm hopeful. And as uh, Councilwoman said, the other night was vibrant. Um, you know, Montclair was booming the other night when we were out. And uh, I think things are going to come back and be better. And we look forward to a future, but let's pray for those folks in Ukraine and Poland. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Um, and, and certainly before I uh, wrap around and end, I think where I started as well. I just want to note and, and certainly as we, we took steps around, um, there's so many pieces all the time, but certainly even tonight around the energy aggregation and the environmental issues that we lead on. Just want to acknowledge that. I think we always talk about that as a township and to, to, to continue to to move the bar and to always be leaders there is, I think, such an important space to be in. I want to commend everybody uh, in the township for always having different pieces of that, whatever that looks like around the environmental pieces, um, but important ones. Um, it, it not only makes a difference in, in the work that we do uh, in a, in a broader scale, but certainly gets recognized. I have to say that just last week it was really exciting. Um, and then I just got, got a message uh, from, from Senator Booker. He says, hey, I'm popping into Montclair, stopping at a couple, a couple shops. You want to, you know, come on by, let's go over. And uh, we were able to stop over Dry Goods Refillery on uh, on Bellevue Ave and uh, on, on Bellevue Ave. And it was uh, it was cool to see, we, we saw Rachel and, and, and Daniel there and, and just talking about what it was. And it was cool to see a United States Senator with his bag, you know, with a bunch of empty bottles, other pieces, right? He's pulling them out and he's, you know, he's got his sweatshirt on and just cat, but he's just, you know, he's just shopping at Montclair. We ran over to a good bottle refill shop on Glen Ridge after that. And again, same thing, watching him figure out how to pump his laundry detergent in the thing and he's smelling other different things and uh, and it was just pretty cool to see, you know, just see, hey, he literally took a trip over not because he was in the middle of this or that, because he literally had some free time and he literally wanted to come over and he knew the great stuff and environmentally conscious things that we have going on in Montclair. And he wanted to stop in a couple of shops and, and literally, you know, fill his bottles, you know, with a couple of different things. So um, really that, that was fun too. And Deanna there was really cool to us and certainly I picked up a few things myself, but I just wanted to note it because it's sometimes, uh, you know, we, we take broad, uh, I think action that has great impact, whether it be, you know, our, our participation in sustainable jersey, our work around energy aggregation. You know, the work that the Gray Russell did even before with, with energy upgrades to our decks, our infrastructure around uh, electric vehicle and charging stations and you know, and the pieces that we constantly do as a community. Uh, but it's also sometimes just fun to see, you know, where, hey, there's just some cool things that happen too. And, and that might be a, a, a United States Senator, you know, coming into town to fill up his bottle. So just wanted to share that. That was pretty fun. Um, and, and certainly as we move into uh, the State of the Union that we're, we're I'm sure going to listen and tune into with the president. Um, certainly want to, you know, end where I started, that uh, you know, very clearly, you know, Montclair stands uh, with the people of Ukraine and, and certainly um, you know, we, we applaud them for their courage. Uh, and we do all we can to support them in any way that we, each and every one of us can, any little thing, any big thing. Uh, all makes a difference. Uh, but we stand united in standing for democracy and standing for um, uh, standing against our, our wars of aggression by, by others. So uh, with that, uh, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Moved and seconded by all. Uh, have a great night, everyone.
Take care, friend.
Night.